Good evening. The regular meeting of the Richmond Board of Education will come to order. Before I start, I would like to take a moment here to acknowledge some of the losses that have happened in our community. Before we begin tonight's meeting, I'd like to take a moment to acknowledge the recent losses experienced in several of our surrounding school districts and ours. These tragedies have deeply impacted students, families, educators, and entire communities. We stand in solidarity with our neighboring districts and ours during this incredibly difficult time. Let us now pause for a moment of silence to honor the lives lost and to reflect on the strength and support we can offer one another. At this time, Cindy, would you please read our mission statement?
Should I do the question?
I'm sorry. At this time, could you please stand for the question?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Cindy, please read our mission statement and take a role.
The mission statement of Richmond Community Schools is that Richmond Community Schools provide quality education that empowers students to be successful in the global community. And our vision statement is to foster a culture of academic excellence, creativity, and character, ensuring that all students are prepared for success in an ever-changing world. And then I will do a role. Board member Anya?
Here.
Board member Willis?
Here.
Board member Mashawn?
Here.
Board member Steyer?
Yes.
Board member Talto?
Here.
Board member Sutton is absent with notice. I am board member Fortuna. I am here to add a quorum. And I just also want to mention that our two student representatives, it was the shape for incoming next year, are, I think, probably enjoying some homecoming stuff. So they are happy with us.
Okay, thank you. I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda, but beforehand I believe we need to make some additions. We are adding item 12. Item 12D, please, under our action items for the purchase and replacement of pullable pads.
And if you will, I appreciate your patience and grace on this, because I did not potentially wait for this until the last minute, but I would like to introduce a motion to remove a couple of today's agenda items. Action item A, approval of board policies, the policies 3115, non-discrimination, anti-harassment, non-retaliation. 3115A, definitions for the 3115 series. And 4101, non-discrimination. The TALSO signed board can receive a presentation or more information from the district's attorney to address all board member questions, provide clarity to the policies, and ensure the best interest of the community stakeholders while maintaining compliance with all applicable state laws and statutes.
Okay, so I'm looking for a motion to approve the agenda with the two changes.
So.
Okay, any discussion? Wait, she said so moved. I'm sorry. Do I have support going on?
Support.
Thank you. Wait, wait. So it was his motion to amend the agenda, correct? So that hers should be in support?
That's so moved.
That's what I was, that's why I said discussion, correct? Because he's making the motion, but she said so moved.
Okay, so your motion?
No, he made it. No, it's all one motion. It's all one motion, guys.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So she motioned to amend it. He added to the amendment, right?
Correct. So he can't make a motion.
Well, then don't I have the motion?
But I thought he was making a motion to amend. You were asking for a motion. I am asking for a motion right now to approve the amended agenda. Okay, but then he was asking, you were amending the agenda for this.
And he was asking.
But he's got to make a motion to amend it in addition. You were, you were asking. I thought we could do both of them all at the same time.
I think you could make more than one amendment in the motion.
I think so.
Yeah.
So that's what we're doing.
So I can either support his or I can motion.
Well, I need someone to make an emotion to approve the agenda.
As amended by both people.
As amended by both people.
Then I.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. Okay, any discussion? Thank you, guys. I guess my only question on the motion is, what's the rationale behind it?
So the reason being is during the last board meeting, when the items were brought to the board for discussion, there was some, there was some, there was a brief discussion regarding 3115. And I had, I had some questions that I didn't initially ask. There was like 43 policy updates and, well, 40 policy updates and three new policies that were given to us on the Friday before. Some of those policies were 28 pages or 26 pages long. It was a lot of information, and I didn't have an opportunity to go through all of those in depth. We briefly discussed all of them during the board meeting, but it was brief. And after the meeting, I still had some residual questions. And so since the last board meeting, I tried to do some research and get answers to those questions. And I think it boils down to, I wouldn't be able to get the answers unless I hear from the attorney herself or that office. And so until I get more clarification on those policies and the questions that I have, I wouldn't feel comfortable. And I don't know if there was other board members. I know that Sarah during that time also had some questions. And then she had mentioned to Brian during the meeting that, well, because of the nature of the questions that she had, and that were related to some closed session questions, she would get offline and not pick it up all the time. And so it led me to believe I wasn't the only one with questions. So that's, that's where I'm at.
Okay, so these three policies that you're referring to, that were approved back in April, and we've already met with the attorney and been given advice on the attorney on these particular policies. So you want to again have the attorney come back and give us opinion again, give us the same advice that they gave us three months ago. You want to run that again. Is that what you're saying?
If they were the exact same policies, they wouldn't be up for review.
It is, it is the exact same policies.
I still have questions.
Well, I, listen, I know, I just, this is, this is time for discussion. We're bringing up this motion, so I'm asking you the question.
Sure.
That you want to bring the attorney back and have us go through everything again when we've had advice from our attorney that these policies were. So you're questioning because you, you, ah, you, okay. Were you talking to Brian? Were you asking Brian questions in the last two weeks of what your questions are? Because we didn't ask any questions two weeks ago. So where, what questions, so what questions do you have that you would want to bring this back is what I'm asking.
Those questions would be for the attorney.
Okay, but if you, if you want me to, to do this, what, what didn't you hear three months ago that you think you're going to hear something different?
I do believe that there's even some changes now, though, also from April, too. I mean, there's strikeouts, there's added language. I mean.
The only changes is that it now lists, if you look at it, it lists, it gives it a list. It's, we took out the, if I correct, the parentheses, and now it's a list of what's there. And I believe, as I have talked with Mr. Womsley, we are required to put the federal piece in, but our attorneys are recommending that we add also the state guidelines, because the state, the federal is like the minimum level. We can then add more to that definition, so to speak.
But I feel like that wasn't talked about in March. I feel like, and again, there was some closed session stuff, so I'm hesitant to say every, all of my questions that I have. But I feel like if we approved it in March and there were no changes, zero changes, it wouldn't be coming before us. We wouldn't need to re-vote on it, because we would just keep it as is. I would also, so I did catch up with Brian after the last meeting. There was some phone glitches on Brian's part, so I didn't get an answer back for about a week. From when I text him to when we spoke, it was about a week delay. So that was a huge amount of time that I lost in getting some questions answered. And then I did ultimately ask Brian to, well, I didn't ask him to. Brian, you said you would reach out to the attorney and ask why it was coming back to us, and I didn't see that answer in the emails that we got. So I don't feel like my question was fully answered by Brian. And it might have just been, again, we lost a week's worth of time because his phone had a glitch. So I don't feel like my questions were answered in the last week either. So that's why I am supportive of this, because I do still feel like I have some questions.
I, I do not have any questions on it. My feeling or my gut feeling is this is coming from our attorneys. They represent us. If, you know, anything were to happen, I am trusting them and with the knowledge and what they have recommended for us to change. And again, it's minimal, guys. We're not talking big, huge word, word adage here. I am, I am comfortable. I've worked with our attorneys. I am comfortable with what they're recommending, so I'm just sharing that as a thought.
Sure, that's great.
Yeah, so we're asking the attorneys to come, to come back for further explanation, but this is, this draft was worked on by them, correct?
Yeah, the changes, the changes that are here.
Their recommendation.
Is from the attorney's recommendation.
So we want them to come in person and tell us those same recommendations.
Well, I think it's more about if we have questions about that, because they were here back in March.
Right.
And Jennifer got up and spoke at the meeting, and we voted on what they've recommended. So then if there's a change, why wouldn't it make sense to have them back out to explain why they're changing something? Because they were just here with changes. And they came, and we voted on what their changes were based on their recommendation. And I'm not saying I wouldn't vote yes on what their recommendation is, but I'd, I'd like her to come back so we can have some questions to answer.
I would say that the changes we had in April, as one that took place, were major. I mean, there were some major changes. We were going from the old title to the new, back to the, actually, back to where it was. Whereas today's changes, it's a matter of we're taking a parenthesis out and we're putting commas in to give it a list.
But I thought there were some different little caveats that I need to feel with these about. If I may do recall, also, that was kind of what, sure, that was a meeting if things were new at that time, but that we may even have follow-up with her at one point as we went along with, you know, what the, I don't think that we even heard from our governor or her feelings at that point. There were still a lot, because everything was still fresh. So I kind of thought we would have another meeting anyways. What's.
But to that point, there's nothing different, can't there? If you, you are right when you talk about conversation coming down the road we had.
Yeah.
But there's nothing different happened.
Then why are we changing it?
Because they're changing parentheses and that.
Why?
I don't know.
We don't know.
Okay.
Exactly. But I don't know.
This is what I read last time, and I put in clarifying, this is, this is the update we get from Shroom that talks about every policy. For 3115, 3115A, which is the non-discrimination, and then the corresponding 4101 that board member Steyer referenced here. This is what it reads. The reason for the changes. Updated the language stating, quote, sex, comma, including pregnancy, comma, gender identity, comma, or sexual orientation, parentheses, to sex, comma, sexual orientation, comma, gender identity or expression, comma, pregnancy, to reflect the Title IX regulation and to ensure consistency with state law. The Title IX regulation is referenced as sex is defined basically in the very simplest male female, right? Which is why they took the gender identity and sexual orientation out of the parentheses and just put the word sex. Where the other part comes in is the state law, which Elliot Larson, Civil Rights Act, that the state identifies those other categories. That's why they put them as a comma. So.
And where does federal law play that?
Federal law is taking the definition of sex to include gender identity and sexual orientation to just meaning sex, which I believe in the Title IX piece, which is one of the later policies. I think that that one just changes the OCR location. That's where it's defined. So the Title IX, because the title is a federal law. All your titles are federal, so.
So I mean, I feel like it traded, would you guys just hear that from the attorney? That's my belief.
But that's where he's getting it from. I don't understand. That's where it's coming from.
I get it. I would like to hear a little bit more on the case law aspect of this. What is in the works, what's not in the works? Who's enforcing what? What would be the damages?
Why do we need to know?
Well, I left our closed session meeting with a different thought in my head, so maybe I misunderstood something in that closed session, but I want to ask the question again, because if I left that closed session meeting thinking something that was false, I want to clarify it.
And that's where I'm at, too. I left that meeting with a different impression on things. And looking at the policies, I just, I had different.
But you left that meeting, what, in April? With a different impression, and you're just now remembering a different impression in September?
So as, as I did my homework, and that's what I was researching, looking back in the past history, going back to the previous agenda, meeting notes, and what did I miss between, between that closed session and today? What did I, how did we get where we're at? And, oh my gosh, how did I overdo it? When I left that meeting, I had a different impression. And when, when the policies referred to dated 14 April, that included specific language in those policies, my mind, I, from the closed session meeting, A, we discussed this, this is what's going to go on moving forward. So admittedly, I didn't look at, as deep into those policies when they proposed, because I'm like, oh, we already discussed this. This is the changes that are going to be made. And then now I'm looking at this going, wait a second, that's not how I remember that. And that's, so I've got, I've got questions. And I just, I just wanted to address those questions. And kind of like Sarah said, it's not that I wouldn't support it one way or the other, I just have some questions, because I left that closed session meeting with a different interpretation of what to expect.
Well, and I don't think the website was not helpful either. When I went to look back at the policies, first of all, it was dated August of 2026, which obviously is wrong. And then when I asked Brian about it, it sounds like the policies that we approved back in April never even got uploaded. So I feel like this whole thing has been kind of messy, and I would like to just hit the reset and kind of go through the timeline, ask the questions, and hit the reset, because I feel like it was kind of handled poorly, maybe from the start of it. Maybe not the start, but once we approved it in April, the policies on the website should have been updated to reflect what we did. It should have been dated right. And those things just didn't happen. So I don't want to just push something through that's all messy. Still, on the bottom, the date was still said reflected 2026, when it was sent out just this last time. I would like things to get cleaned up a bit before we move forward, because I don't think they're clean right now.
And it's my understanding that the law firm, correct me if I'm wrong, Brian, law firm provided you with those updates in June?
Correct.
Okay, and then so they weren't brought up to us as a board to review and vote on?
It's September 8th.
It tells September 8th. Do you want to know why? Okay, I'm just saying, I don't see the.
Well, I guess I.
I don't see why we can't wait just a little bit longer to get answers, more clarification, if it's been that.
Okay, any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
Okay, motion does not carry. Okay, next item on our agenda. I'm looking.
Can't move.
Okay, that's right, we can't, I'm sorry. I'm going back then. I need a motion to approve the, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the item 12D added. Do I have support?
Support.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, I'm looking for a motion for the approval of the consent agenda.
Can I not make a motion on my motion? I mean, the one that.
Didn't pass. Didn't pass.
It failed.
So, so it was a tie, right? Am I understanding?
Well, you voted yes for hers.
And it was re-brought forward, and that was where you added the part that Brian had put in.
Yep.
So that was its own specific, and so that's why I was wondering if.
It didn't pass. It didn't pass. You made a motion, when a motion ties, the motion fails. So then she asked for another motion. So then I made a motion to approve the agenda, adding item 12D. That motion had a second. That motion was approved. So now we're moving forward with the meeting, moving on to the next items. So we're going through with the meeting.
Okay, and that's, and that's, new guy.
No.
So that's, that's where I was under the understanding if there was a tie, there would be brought to new discussion and a revote, and then it'd be tied again, then from there.
No. So if, if Margaret's motion hadn't passed, then.
We would go back again.
We would have to go back.
Again, and I would be saying.
But since four people voted yes.
Correct.
Margaret's motion passed.
Correct. Okay. Okay, I'm looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda. So moved. Do I have a second? Support? Any discussion? Mr. Womsley?
In your packet or for you is a revised personnel report as we finalize the hiring. Did you try to find it? Sorry. Okay, for new hires, Matt, just a ref, varsity basketball coach. He and the other candidates were talking, we had a conversation today, as far as those that applied, as well as him, is accepted the position. We have two St. A's Title I staff, just, they are hired by the district. We, we pay them, but they actually work through the St. A's Title program. Ms. Angela Lahey.
Yes.
Can you pronounce it, Lahey?
Yes.
Sorry. And Linda Viviano, the work for the Title staff at St. A's. We have a food service staff that resigned, Faith Dillard. That position is re-posted. One of our recent hires, Melissa Raven, middle school resource room teacher is resigning at the end of the month due to some personal issues. David Kemp is a bus driver. He, he used to run a split route. When one of the bus drivers retired, he hasn't been working for us, and he doesn't have current capital license to drive a bus, so that's why he's on there as, as part of the termination. And you'll see some appointments, Samantha Perry and Stephanie Carella, the web coordinator, they're splitting the position at the middle school. And then we will post remaining varsity basketball coaches tomorrow, so we can fill the team. I believe that's it for the personnel report. As far as the other items, excuse me, the per, the meeting minutes from the September 7th, I didn't have, receive any questions on those or the full-time equivalent report. I need to see that report shows us continuing to be up in enrollment. October 1st is count day, that's the official day that they'll measure it. We are optimistic that we're going to be higher than we were last year. That's all I have.
And we have any questions for Mr. Womsley? So Brian, this, this bus driver then, now I know we were hiring, gonna hire those the first, so by losing that, does that?
He wasn't out, he was not on a route. He would have been considered a sub-bus driver if we needed him. So it doesn't affect our current staffing for bus drivers.
And what we're doing with that?
Correct. He would have been the extra if we needed for a field trip or to cover someone.
Okay, and then with the resource room teacher? I'm assuming we posted for that job?
Yes.
Okay, and what are, what are the ads we're getting? I mean, that's going to be very hard, right?
Yes. It may, it may be certified teacher that we're getting out of emergency, served for special ed. Our goal is to get someone in there as quickly as possible.
I just want to comment that I think it's lovely that Stephanie Carella, middle school secretary, is doing that. I think that's really cool. Good for her to get involved in that. Any other questions? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Next item on our agenda is our Blue Devil Raves. We'll start off with Kim.
Yes, I wanted to give a shout out to the Richmond Trap team for achieving the double A champ first place. And special congratulations to M and P, Dylan, and Kaya D.A. for their individual personal achievements that they received at the Trap Tournament on Saturday. And also congratulations to Coach Chris Gru. This was his first tournament as the coach, so I hope he really did it. Good job.
Thank you. Next, Raymond?
Nothing at this time.
Sarah? Sandy? No, I'm outside. Margaret?
Yeah, I want to, it's homecoming, and I wanted to rave and thank the four families that have opened their homes for float building, and that is the Brickle, Freely, Oldami, and Doppler families. Thanking them, it's a lot to open up and bring all those kids into your, into your house and, and all those days, so we thank them for that. And we've been going to the houses as board members, and they're having a lot of fun, and the floats are looking good. I want to do a rave Friday night. Our football team beat Armenia, which was absolutely fabulous. And we have that rock out front of the school, you know, that we can paint for good things that happen. And on Saturday morning, it was painted blue and white, and it said the score of the game, and it said we got the jug. And I just a shout out to Mr. Womsley, Ms. Manguni, Mr. Gibson, and Ms. Borwick, because they were the ones that painted it to make sure that, that the kids saw that, and everyone was thrilled. So thank you. I just think that's really cool, too, that our administrators would take the time to show, show the team how much support they have for them. And my last rave, if you haven't been out to a football game this year, the team, at the end of the game, they restarted a little tradition where they come to the stands and they do the fight song. It is just, just so darn cool. They come over, and it's, it's good, because it's bothered me for a long time that kids don't know the fight song and, and don't do it, but, but the team is doing it, and the cheerleaders are doing it with them, and there's even fans now that are starting to do it with them. So at the end of every game, they come over and do it, and it just shows a lot of school spirit, and it's just great.
Awesome. Yep. I just want to acknowledge the football game, too. We have beat Armenia since 2019. So that was a great win for our team. Student board ref, we don't have any. Ms. Talto, you had the report?
I've got their report.
Okay, thank you.
And they are at Powder Puff. They were very concerned, and I said Powder Puff participation was way more important than the board meeting. So here we go, at the high school. Spirit Week is this week throughout all the buildings, so show your school spirit and dress up. Powder Puff is. Powder Puff is tonight with the Bonfire Cider and Donuts after. The pep assembly is Friday. The homecoming parade is underway on the 26th at 5:00. So make sure to go and show your Richmond community love. And it still starts down there, right?
Down by D V Street Park.
D V Street Park comes down Main Street to Division. Homecoming is Saturday at 6:00 p.m. The theme is Night in Rio. We're also excited to see everyone get dressed up and ready to have a good time. October is College Month. Multiple college visits will take place throughout the month of October and into November. Students can register by scanning the QR code and signing up. Paying for College. There is an Open University Paying for College event tomorrow night, Tuesday at 6:30 in the Media Center. Pre-registration is required. At the middle school, see you at the polls September 24th, about 15 to 20 minutes before school starts for the National Day of Student Prayer. At Lee School, the elementary had picture day on the 17th. The re-tapes are scheduled for Wednesday, October 22nd. Boys soccer continues to improve at a rapid pace and even earned a tie against league champion Emily City. And they also earned a win over Cross Lex. Tonight, they're playing Armada. Hopefully, they beat Armada, too. Football, JV playing Cross Lex on the 11th and Armada on the 18th. For the first time in six years, we just said varsity football-- Oh, no, sorry. I went ahead of myself. For the first time in five years, varsity football beat Cross Lex. That was two weeks ago, 28 to 10. And also, for the first time in six years, Richmond beat Armada and got the jug back Friday night. This Friday, we play North Branch. The theme is blue and white. So wear your blue and white to the game. In volleyball, varsity volleyball hosted the Richmond Invitational with 11 of other schools and finished second in the silver division.
Margaret, with the time, this is the dance. What time did they have the examination?
Six.
Do you know if that's accurate or not?
Does it matter that you know that I got the base at seven?
I'll double check it.
Okay. We'll get back to her.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next item on our agenda is our superintendent and legislative update. Mr. Womsley?
Okay, the legislative update. Another week has passed. We don't have a budget. Last week, actually, they announced the Senate would hold a rare Monday session, which was today. And the House was supposed to hold a-- Or will hold this session on Wednesday. I don't know what happened. I didn't see any follow-up or budget been reached or anything. So hopefully soon, because the clock is ticking. Last week, at the conference I was at, they had multiple people from the state and our organization, several organizations, talking about the budget. Not optimistic. Just on a show of hands, they asked the superintendents that were in the room what their cash flow status was. There's a lot of districts that are going to run out of money at the first or second payroll in October. We are in a very good spot when you compare us to other districts and the borrowing there. Our plan is if October 1st comes and goes, the plan right now for the board is October 13th to begin the process to get all the paperwork that has to get done for approval should we have to borrow money. I can't imagine us being closed that long, but I at least want to get the process started. Worst case, we approve it, you don't have to use it. That's the best case scenario. Based on what we're hearing, it's three people talking in a closed room. It's the governor, the Speaker of the House, and the Senate Majority Leader are all trying to figure out the budget. So and roads is a huge package or a huge priority. If you'll give me a second, I want to point out to the community. If you go to the district's website under the superintendents tab, you're going to see all of these transparency documents. These are published by the-- This is where the money goes. So if I open up-- Bear with me, I'll figure out why the link isn't working for 25. But this is 23, 24. And if you look at it, it's a lot of graphic. But this tells you where your money's going. And for our sake, the important part is the green, which is the school aid fund. And I think it's important to realize that under this fund, it then gets divvied out. When we look at higher education, almost $500 million goes to universities. And another 550 goes to colleges out of the school aid fund. The rest of their money comes out of the blue section of the general fund. What the proposal is to bring this almost billion dollar total to 2 billion, taking more money out of the school aid, moving this money into the roads, and putting 100% of the colleges and universities coming out of the school aid fund. Currently, if you take this dollar value that's being given to colleges and universities-- Again, this is 24, 25. I will get the 25 up there. Or 23, 24. It equates to $700 per pupil that is going from the school aid to college. That if it stayed in the school aid, schools would be able to have-- Just this alone is $700 more per pupil. When you add this amount that they're looking at, that's a significant amount of money taken from the school aid to be given to non-K-12 schools. You'll also see in here, if you want, if you're interested, you know, there's the lottery transfer. Yeah, 100% of lottery does go to the school aid fund. But they're also backing things out of the school aid and paying for other things, as you can see by this graph here. Just something interesting is put out by the state once they publish the budget, where all the monies are going. So I encourage you to stay active because if that moves up to 2, 3 billion dollars, that's a lot of money leaving the school aid fund that shouldn't be for K-12 schools.
So $700, so it doesn't have a million dollars for us.
Yeah, $700, giants, let's just go even, 1,500 student FTEs.
Close to $100.
These are all, like, they're public documents. The one thing that we also is on the radar is that the federal government, their budget also ends September 30th. They're still working on passing either an appropriations or a continuing resolution. For schools, we may not feel the impact of that directly or immediately because most of our federal funds have already been allocated. Where it's going to be impacted is Head Start. And what's called an Impact Aid, it's those districts that have-- And there, I believe, there are 20 of them in the state of Michigan that a federal lands in their district that exempt them from taxes. So they get a portion of those dollars to offset that lost tax revenue. But Head Start, so we have some of our kids that are in the county program at Lee Elementary School. October 1, Head Start's not funded. So for those families, we're just kind of-- Even though it's run through the county, many of those are our kids, our families. So we are watching that and seeing what's going to happen there. Other than that, I know, I mean, the other legislative update. District updates. Tomorrow starts our third year hatching results with our counselors with the goal that at the end of this year, we'll come to an overview of our counseling program that we've been working the last two years and phasing in. A lot of the stuff they've learned in hatching results, they have already started doing. The colleges you mentioned or that the student reps talked about, that's one of the things that they focus on in hatching results to get those up and going and as a regular. It's not something in addition to. Just a reminder, tomorrow is the McComb County School Board Association Dinner. If anybody's schedule has changed and they can go, just let us know. They always welcome people to come at night. As mentioned, Wednesday is See You at the Polls. It was brought up at the last board meeting. We have brought in public comment. We've put out information. There is the stuff on our website. This is a nationwide student-led initiative. I've talked to some of the members of the Youth for Christ group just to remind them that this is something that they could take leadership roles on and be active on.
So about 7:30?
I would say between 7:15 and 7:30, depending on how-- How many students and how many prayers are making right or someone's leading.
It's at both the high school and the middle school?
We've-- It's available at all three buildings. We've targeted the middle school and high school in terms of announcing to students. If we had students or we had staff at the elementary school who are interested in leading it for students, because it's kind of the age group, it's kind of a little hard for them to-- We're not going to stop people. But at this time, I'm not aware of anybody at the elementary school necessarily leading it. Could have come in today, and I don't know a lot of gaps. So I know there were a couple of students at the middle school and high school who indicated that they were planning on meeting other students at the poll. This Wednesday, we also have the BWAC Sportsman Summit. Richmond is hosting it. We'll be hosting the all the student athletes from across all the BWAC schools. Hopefully, they send eight athletes. There's athletic director here. We start with a continental breakfast for them. And then we'll have a kind of keynote speaker on sportsmanship. The goal is to kind of re-energize and bring back the BWAC Code of Ethics for sportsmanship that was several years ago. And to have conversation with the students about what's appropriate, what's not, how they can be leaders in their respective districts, and then take that back. And then they'll finish the morning with a lunch, let the students interact, and then they'll head back to their home districts. Information on the bond, I know at least this board has probably got this memorized and can say it in their sleep. But all the information has been on the website. I've been referring many, many people here. These are all the groups that we have talked to. Kind of see whether checklist or check marks. There's a couple out here that we still have yet to do, any presentations. The key here is that it is a no increase over the current debt military. So what our debt military was in July of 2025 is what we're asking the voters, which generated about $51.8 million. You'll see, and again, on the scope, here's the budgets for each school. So you can kind of get a brilliant numbers and looking at that stuff. Here's the scope for each school, how it all totals up, all the communication that have gone out, the flyers. We've seen these many times. The interview's on there. So I just-- We've had a lot of positive feedback from the community on it. This is-- There's nothing excessive on here. This is about physical building space for our current enrollment and future. If you just look at this year alone, if we're up 30 students and the projection was 300 over 10 years, that averages about 30 students a year. We're already hitting projections. So if you have questions, please call. Hit the Just Ask button, and we'll respond on that appropriately. Some upcoming dates before our next board meeting. Our next one's not until October 13th. So we've got three Mondays here between this one and the next one. We already mentioned the Powder Puff game. If you're done with the board meeting, you want to go by, they will have the bonfire immediately following. On Friday is the middle school pep assembly at 8:00. The high school's during 7th hour at the football soccer complex, weather permitting. We might be ignoring the training. We talked about the parade at 5:00 and the homecoming game at 7:00. Saturday is the dance. Sunday is our Hall of Honor, Academic Hall of Honor and Athletic Hall of Fame. Doors open at 1:00. And the ceremony starts at 1:30. There's some really, really unique inductees and some special people. Next Wednesday, I'm wondering from this Wednesday, is count day. So attendance matters. You want to make sure everybody's in school on October 1st. And then the following week, our parent-teacher conferences. So that will happen before our next board meeting. Just-- And it's in the district calendar, but I just want to reiterate, there's a slight change to conference times this year. We're doing a 12 to 7 window. And teachers will schedule a dinner break at some point, but it's a solid 12 to 7 for K-12 students and a 12 to 8 window for preschool students. That's part of a negotiated contract. So you may see on a teacher's schedule from, I don't know, 5 to 5:30, whatever, they're blocked out for their dinnertime. But we tried to fill them that where we had parents who wanted that 3 to 5 window. Because our attendance typically drops off between that 7 and 8 o'clock hour. So we created the whole window zone. We're trying it, see what works, hopefully. It's a good thing.
Mr. Womsley, I was able to reach out and forward just now. The dance is at 7:00 p.m. on Saturday.
7:00 p.m. on Saturday.
Thank you.
That's it.
Thank you very much. Okay, next item is our items of interest from the board. So first person is Sarah. Okay, Sandy? Nope, I'm outside. Candace?
Yes, I think I've talked about this before. I'm not sure. I guess the question is for Brian. Have you heard any type of peer-to-peer type parental course-- Not courses necessarily, but sort of meetings? I think it starts with 30 for parents to kind of navigate through this whole phones and gaming and, you know, just hanging with the mental health aspect of what this is doing for the children.
When you say peer-to-peer, you're talking parent to parent?
Yeah, like for, you know--
I haven't heard that, though we did have a conversation last week. Kara Southeast Michigan is looking at doing a parent-- I thought workshop, but--
Lots of serious like parenting classes?
That we can kind of pick the topics that-- I'm going to address, I think there has to be a minimum of 15. There was a minimum, I think. There's a minimum, I think, yes, it's 10. I think it was 15. But that-- We literally just had the conversation last week about putting that in place and trying to get that information out by conferences so that it would fall after conferences. I can look and see if some of those topics are in that list that they have. They generally do. They usually have a pretty extensive list.
You have a son? Oh, I'm sorry. One?
You know, I have to just say this. I am highly disheartened, you know, being in the education industry here, that, you know, we have board members that are asking for clarity and wanting, you know, to be educated a little bit more from, you know, our attorneys. It is disheartening that we have other board members that would want to intentionally turn that down. Whether they understand the topic or not, your fellow team here is questioning it. And so I just have to shut that off because I'm just--
That's it. Thank you. The next item, Raymond? Sorry, next person?
Just a quick notice to everybody here. I think everybody here already knows, but also to the community, this will be my last in-person meeting until next spring due to a military deployment. We'll have the intent of-- You know, we've set it up through the ID department and through Brian here to attend virtually via Teams for all the meetings. So I do plan on keeping up to date for when I can. And so if you don't see my ear for some extended period of time, you'll see me on the screen.
Have the space.
Yes, you'll see my face. I'm just physically dressed.
Thank you very much. Margaret?
No, I haven't. Okay, I just have two things. I, too, want to stress the prayer at the poll. I think in this day and age and everything that's been going on, I don't think some prayers would hurt all of us. And my second thing is, I just wanted to let everyone know that I got ahold of MSBA regarding-- On September 12th, regarding those updates that we're supposed to look at before Candace and I go and vote. And the email I got back said it will be sent to all of you soon. Now, that was on 9/12. So please look. Some of mine are going into my junk, so I've been checking my junk. If anybody gets them, please just shout out or let us know so we can make sure that we all get it. Because we're going to-- I am hoping, I don't know what else we're going to do, but we're only going to have that October 13th meeting before we go. So I am hoping that'll be there so we can have those discussions as far as how you'd want us to vote for Richmond on those policies. Okay, so I just want to let you know I'm on it. I've been following through, trying to get us that information.
Okay, next item on our agenda is public comments. Since the last board meeting, the board has not received any emails. And there were no public comments that needed addressing from the last board meeting. At this time, any member of the public will have three minutes to address the board. Please sign in and state your name. If you wish a follow-up, please provide contact information on the public comment sign-in sheet. Are there any public comments?
Hi, Beanie Sire. Let me give you some quotes of words that I have seen on public social media from our staff. staff, our administrative, uh, staff. Moron, deranged, fools, ignorant, imbrants, effing disgraces, Trump's a bitch, moronic effort. These are the words spewed by staff and administration within this district on social media. These are the words used to describe how they feel about the current presidential administration and its voters. Here's another one, and I quote, "I know I'm a dick for saying I care more about a class of dead first graders than I am about a guy that said kids dying was acceptable. Oh, well, I will sleep okay." That right there is the hate rhetoric, misinformation used to fuel hate, again by a staff member in the Richmond schools. In a time where kids are gunned down while praying and a man is assassinated for talking, I don't think we need any more fueling, more hate, and spewing misinformation, especially staff and administration. Who are you, who are you in the faces of this community? Yes, we have a mental health issue among youth and young adults. One of the common denominators in this, in these tragedies is they were fueled by hate and words. What example is staff setting for our youth? I will end with this quote, "Hate, it could, it has caused a lot of problems in our world, but has not solved one yet." My angel.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Okay, next item is our action items. Looking for a motion for the approval of board policies.
I move to accept the recommendation of the superintendent to approve the attached board policies as presented on September 8th, 2025, as outlined in the attached documentation.
Do I have support? Thank you, Seaman. Uh, any discussions?
Yeah, just going back to the policies I mentioned previously with 3115, 3115A, and 4101, um, I just was really hoping to get more clarification, having the opportunity to speak with the attorney on that, um, because at, at this point, I just, I don't feel comfortable supporting those items because of the, the questions that I have. And, uh, you know, unfortunately, I don't want to spoil business, because all these are, all of the policies are lumped into one, and so it's not my intent to, to spoil the business of the, the district, but I see that all these are lumped into one, so I just, I, I just can't support it until I have those initial sort of clarification.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Aye. Okay, so motion does not carry. Have to get up with you on that. Okay. Next item on our, or, I'm sorry, next approval item is, I'm looking for a motion for the approval of speech and language therapist contract with presence.
I move to accept the recommendation of the superintendent to approve the contract with presence to fill a temporary vacancy in special education as outlined in the attached documentation.
Do I support it? Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I'm looking for a motion for the approval of transportation contract with first student.
I motion to accept the recommendation of the superintendent to approve the contract with first students to build two vacant bus driver positions for the 2025, 26 school year as outlined in the attached documentation.
Do I have support?
Support.
Thank you. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Look at. Oh, was there a dollar amount there?
$61,600. Isn't that what it says?
Yeah, but it wasn't in the motion. Does that matter?
It still, it still says the contract was $61,600.
Yeah, okay, I, I'll go back, we'll make this a roll call vote, you can. Okay.
It's good practice, because when we're doing emergency, it should be rolled all those out, too.
Yeah, but it should be, shouldn't that amount then be stated inside of the actual motion?
Doesn't necessarily have to be, because?
Because it's in the attached documentation, that's not just.
Well, and also, if the contract, it could be that amount, it would be.
Could be a difference, less than that amount.
Could be less than that.
More than that.
Absences or something.
Okay, okay, no problem. Um, going to go back, this is going to be a roll call vote. Sandy?
Aye.
Candace?
Aye.
Margaret?
Aye.
Raymond?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
I vote aye, motion carries. Okay, I'm looking for the emotion, I'm looking for a motion to approve the purchase of replacement pole bolt pads.
I move to accept the recommendation of the superintendent to approve the purchase of replacement pole bolt pads from the Anthem Sports for a value not to exceed $20,764.95 as outlined in the attached documentation for which funding is authorized.
Do I have support?
Support.
Thank you. Any discussion? Uh, no, sorry. You're good?
Yeah.
Okay, this is a roll call vote. Margaret?
Aye.
Sarah?
Aye.
Candace?
Aye.
Raymond?
Aye.
I vote aye. Did I get Seaman?
No, but I vote aye.
Sandy?
Okay.
I'm sorry. I vote aye, motion carries. Uh, being no further business, the board will adjourn at 7:56.